Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We were having some technical difficulties with Zoom. We believe the public and our council members are able to attend now that are attending by Zoom. And we're going to go ahead and get started with call to order.
Thank you. Mayor LaBar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Case.
Here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Zulawaga.
Present.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And this evening, we're starting with 3A, and that is oath of office to Police Officer Brennan Sullivan. And our presenter is Chief of Police Chris Deisler.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Now, how's that?
Yeah.
All right, very good. Audible Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you tonight to participate in the swearing-in ceremony for one of our new officers. This is always a pleasant time for us to be able to bring someone into our family and bring them on board, get them a part of our team, and basically teach them how we like to do things up here and service to the community. As you can see, we got a pretty packed front row here. This guy's pretty popular. So I just want to say that I appreciate all of you coming in to be a part of this and sharing this with us. And I don't want to take too much of your time, so I've got the oath of office ready for Officer Brennan Sullivan. And if you'll give me just a minute, I'll get this microphone out of here. I'll bring him up. And tonight, we're happy to say that he will be pinned by his mother. So we're going to have Mom come up here, too. And I will tell you that I know this feeling because, you know, my mom, once upon a time, was the proud mother of, you know, the new cop. So this is always fun when we can involve family members in ceremonies like this. So without further delay, I'll take this up. Officer Sullivan, come on up here with me, sir. And I was going to take a shot at memorizing this again because it's been a while since I've read it, but I'm not that good. So I'm going to read tonight. If you don't mind, we'll just go and have you stand over there and raise your hand for me. I state your name.
I, Brennan Sullivan.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Colorado, and the ordinances and charter of the City of Woodland Park. Ordnances and Charter of the City of Woodland Park. I will conduct myself with honesty and integrity. Will serve my community with bravery and honor. And will never betray the public trust. I will faithfully perform the duties of a Woodland Park Police Officer, which I affirm I am qualified for and now about to enter. Well done. So I'll set this down. And now, like I said, now for the fun part. So Mom, this is always the running joke every time we swear somebody in, so I'm going to keep the joke running. If you take the pen and you keep it just like this, you can make him pay for everything he did as he did. Tell you what, if you guys want me to do it like this, play it off this way. All right. If anybody wants to take pictures, you can take them. Come on up and take a few, but we will have some to share. Yeah, I know, right? I'm going to start handing out Band-Aids whenever we do this, too, just in case. Yeah, you're good. Remember, it doesn't have to be pretty. Just go for effect. There you go. Perfect. So Officer Brennan Sullivan, thank you very much. We don't expect you to make a speech, so I'm not going to ask you that. But I will tell you this, and it's important that we have Mom. We have Mom's friends. We have prospective in-laws. I'll say it. A lot of folks have come here to be a part of this. And I will tell you that one of the things that we will make a promise to all of you is we will do everything we can to get him the best equipment he can have, the best training he can have, and the best support system that we can give him to get him back to all of you when we're done with him during the day. So that's the only thing I can give you is my promise that we will continue to do that the best way we can. We've made some pretty great strides in equipment over the last seven, fifteen months, and we're far ahead of where we were this time last year. So thank you all very much for allowing him to come work with us. Mom, thank you very much for helping to pin him. And congratulations again, sir. Appreciate it. Chris, you want to take one of us real quick? All right, Mr. Lawson, if you want to hide.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
May, sir.
Um, are you right out of the academy? Oh, okay. Where are you coming from? All right.
Yeah, I have a little bit of time on the books there, so a little bit of experience. And from what I understand, it's serving him well because I gather he's been a quick study in FTO so far. Lieutenant Arseneau is nodding her head in affirmation, so I guess he's on the right track. So yeah, it's always nice. We can bring him in with a little bit of experience. Very good.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Up next on the agenda, we have 3B, which is proclamation declaring August 6th through the 12th, 2023 is Woodland Park Farmers Market Week. And I think we have Sarah Swart here. And Sarah's going to give us some information about farmers market. And then I'm going to read a whole bunch of whereas's.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Swart with the Farmers Market. I want to thank the mayor and the council for declaring next week Woodland Park Farmers Market Week. That'll be in conjunction with National Farmers Market Week. And the proclamation is full of all the wonderful things that a farmer's market brings to a community. So I will just outline a few. Increasing access to Colorado-grown and produced fruits, vegetables, meats, eggs. We serve as an incubator for local small businesses. It's a place for local organizations to share resources and information about their services in our community. But mostly, I think the farmer's market, or maybe most importantly, it's a forum for building community and nurturing those ties that bring us all together. So I want to extend my thanks to you for declaring this proclamation, but also to the city as a whole, its citizens, the staff, all the maintenance workers, everybody who helps to make this farmer's market happen through the work that they do in support of us. So I hope that you all have had a chance to come this summer. And if you haven't, please come on out. I think it's a great time. We always have live music and lots of interesting vendors, great food, so I hope to see you all there.
Awesome. Thank you. We're fortunate we have you guys. It's an awesome farmer's market. All right. I read the proclamation. Whereas in conjunction with National Farmers Market Week, this is an ideal time to highlight the benefits farmers markets bring to Colorado communities. Whereas nearly 100 farmers markets across the state offer farm-fresh, affordable, and healthy products such as fruit, vegetables, dairy products, herbs, flowers, baked goods, meats, eggs, locally-made food, and much more. And whereas farmers markets serve as an integral link between urban, suburban, and rural communities, especially as people increasingly desire local products and to support resilient local supply chains. And whereas farmers markets are important outlets for agricultural producers to sell directly to those who buy their local products and to increase their farm income, as well as stimulating business development and job creation. And whereas farmers markets foster direct relationships between community members and agricultural producers, promoting sustainable food systems and increasing the public's understanding of agriculture. And whereas farmers markets are critical components of the food and agricultural supply chain and continue to serve communities in ways that are safe, inviting, and accessible for all. And whereas innovative local farmers, ranchers, farmworkers, food processors, market staff, and volunteers adapt to meet the community's needs and provide local food options. And whereas the State of Colorado and Colorado Department of Agriculture strongly support and promote the development and operation of farms, farmers markets, and other direct-to-market activities for agricultural producers that promote local products through the Colorado Proud Program. Therefore, to further awareness of farmers markets, contributions to Woodland Park life, I, Hillary LaBar, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of August 6th through the 12th, 2023 as Woodland Park Farmers Market Week. All right. Off to four, we have nothing. Five, consent calendar. And this, Council, just remember, this is quasi-judicial, and it's just consent calendar to move on to public hearing. So we have 5A, consider ordinance number 1456, and our presenter is Planning Director Karen Schminkie. Oh, it's not?
Excuse me, I'm confused.
Oh, yeah.
It's consent agenda, so do you?
No, sorry. I just skipped ahead, and I usually say, who's presenting?
Is it appropriate to get a thumbnail sketch of what she's going to be presenting?
Was it not in our packet? Oh.
No.
I'm sure that.
It was. I missed it.
What am I hearing? The discussion at the retreat was around moving these, moving these things on first reading to the consent agenda, because all we're really doing here is setting a hearing for later. And the materials all presented in the packet, so.
Yeah, so there should be a staff report for item A and B.
Yeah, I see. Yeah. And I actually forgot. I have read it.
Mayor?
Yeah.
And what you see at initial posting is very much an abbreviated, just announcing, this is the item. Please set the hearing. It's when the hearing packet, where you get the much more detailed report with all the maps and more information.
Right. Thank you, Karen. I always just get ahead and read who's presenting because it's just stuck in my brain that way, so. All right, so Council, do you want to do items A and B together? Would that be all right? To pass them both to public hearing? Okay.
I would be fine with that.
Okay, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the present consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
And set the public hearing for August 17th, 2023, for both item A and B.
Second, the completed thought.
Okay, so I have a first by Case and a second by Connors. Council, you may vote.
It was me. It was Robert, I believe.
Robert?
Yeah, I started it, but then I did not have the date setting, establishing when it would be. Robert waited for that, so he has a second.
Okay, thank you. Council, you may vote. Councilmember Connors, have you voted?
It hasn't shown up on my screen, but my vote is yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, very good. Now we're off to item six, public comment on items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, our first speaker is Holly Sample. And Ms. Sample has asked me to hand these out to the council. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Holly Sample. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and the public about an issue that is not on tonight's agenda. I'm grateful that you've opened up community comment. I'm here to speak to you and to let the community know about a project for people who are tired of the growing rancor and division that's increasingly tearing our county, community, and families apart. People on opposite sides of the political spectrum don't only disagree on issues, they increasingly dislike each other. I'm part of an informal group of Teller County citizens who are also members of the National Braver Angels Project. Braver Angels is a nonpartisan organization that's working to bridge the divide in our country and communities. And we do this by bringing people of different political views together to learn how to have civil conversations about important and difficult issues. We look for common ground if there is any, but we don't try to change anyone's mind. Our goal is to reduce the animosity that poisons our civic culture and to help people understand each other beyond stereotypes. We organize events such as workshops, debates, and community conversations where participants can get to know their fellow Americans better. And I'm here to invite you and any other members of the public to a short introductory meeting on August 29th at 6:00 PM at the Woodland Park Library's large meeting room. County Commissioner Dan Williams has endorsed this project, and he will be our opening speaker at that meeting. And I've asked for your endorsement of this project because I'm impressed with the way you, as council members, conduct yourselves while doing public business. You are role models in a time where respectful public dialogue is rare. And as you know, this work offers constant challenges and opportunities to continue building skills to have those productive conversations. Thank you for your support, and I hope to see you at the meeting on the 29th. Members of the community who are tired of divisiveness and polarization, please come to this meeting to see how you can learn skills for having respectful conversations with people who might have different political views, but share a love of this country and this community. You'll learn more about the organization and its mission, and you'll have the opportunity to meet other people who are interested in finding common ground. So why not give it a try? Your country will thank you. And I've put extra flyers in the back and hope that you'll pick one up and join us at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jerry Penland?
My name is Jerry Penland, Woodland Park citizen and voter. This represents 27 pages. Each of these 27 pages is one of the non-primary resident short-term rentals owned by Woodland Park Citizen, an SDR investor. These are the voters that you support. Of course, there's more than 27. Where do they come from? All the SDR investors that you support. So far, the rest come from Colorado outside Woodland Park, from California, Texas, Kansas, Missouri, Georgia, Michigan, Nebraska, Nevada, Oklahoma, Virginia, and Washington State. I have no answer to give the hundreds of folks who have asked over the last eight months, why are you doing what you're doing to support short-term rental investors? I have no answer. But the ones asking the questions are strong supporters of our citizens' ordinance. Your vision is clear to allow any investor anywhere in the world to buy any single-family house anywhere in our city and operate a lodging business next door in our neighborhoods. Your community is speaking very clearly to you. You just aren't listening and not putting our Woodland Park community first. This stack, I would pass it around, but it's a little heavy. This stack, each page represents a Woodland Park voter that is supporting our citizens' ordinance. The number is growing every day. These citizens do not share your vision. They share our vision to preserve the character of our neighborhoods and our city, our city. We're Woodland Park, a home-ruled city in Colorado. We're not California. We're not Texas. We're not Florida, or any of the states in between. We have a city attorney. An open question to Woodland Park citizens. Why are members of our city council desperately doing research to find case law anywhere in the nation that supports their desire to give away our neighborhoods to investors? Do we really want to rely on California, Texas, or Florida to decide what we should do about our short-term rental problems? We're Woodland Park, a home-ruled city in Colorado. Everybody will soon know what this home-ruled city legally wants as a solution to our short-term rental problems. Our citizens' ordinance, not your investor ordinance 1431 that the citizens stopped, and not your new proposed investor ordinance that we could also stop. Once our citizens' ordinance becomes law, we expect, we expect you to do everything possible to defend every single word in our citizens' ordinance to finally, to finally honor your oath of office to maintain the character of our neighborhoods and our city. We fully expect you to do your job and honor your oath of office. Thank you.
No other speakers, ma'am.
Okay. None on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
All right, off to unfinished business. We are 7A, recap of the signature event process. And our city manager, Michael Lawson, is going to listen on that.
So I'm going to ask Dave if he got the presentation. I sent such an email. Yes. I did. So I sent him an email at the presentation. David's filling in for Eric, who got it earlier from me, so my apologies, Dave.
That's okay. Just real quick to remind Rusty and Frank, if you have anything to say, just chime in because I'll forget that you're on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, and while Dave's getting that queued up, I'd like to put you on the spot, Dave. My apologies. What this is in the, for the 2023 budget process, council had elected to put into the budget $15,000 to fund what we called signature events, things that kind of exemplify the spirit of Woodland Park. We had a more technical definition of what a signature event is, and I'll get into that. Y'all put $15,000 in the 23 budget, and the idea was to help these events flourish. We did that process. We rolled out a pilot program this year that started in the spring, and we made awards to 20, or excuse me, 20 applications, 13 recipients. And we made those awards, I believe, in late June. And we wanted to give you kind of a debrief on how that went, the who got the awards. We had a lot of questions about that, lessons learned, and to ask the council if there were changes that the council felt were necessary. Being the council is the one who put the money in the budget. We especially wanted to be receptive to the council's desires for how that money is used in the future, based on our experience in this year. So I, one of the first slides is the history. I just pretty much gave it to you. We had 20 applicants for the funding. We had an application, paper application that folks filled out and provided that to Johnson, who was our assistant to the city manager. Those were reviewed, and then it was the Parks, Recreation, and Advisory Board that did that review, evaluated those 20 applications against the program criteria, which I'll get to here in just a minute. And Prab was the one, the folks on that committee, we appreciate them very much. They're the ones who chose the 13 recipients to move forward and receive an award. The awards range in value from $250 to $2,000. The award criteria, we define signature events as the following. They primarily attract tourists from outside Woodland Park, also attract community involvement and local interest, have the potential for economic impact, like increased hotel occupancy, visitation, and restaurant sales. And they are those events that balance community impact and interest along with city lodging and sales tax benefits. So for each of those 20 applications, what Prab did is looked at all the different questions. You know, what's your event about? Who does it serve? About how much money do you expect to bring into the community? The application was in the council packet for your review as well, so I won't get too much more into it. And then evaluated that against these criteria that I just read to the council. They came up with those 13 folks. There were differing levels of awards made to each of those 13 successful applicants. I'm not going to read through them. Hopefully, we can get it up there. It's in the packet. It is in the packet. Yes, it's in the staff report. Thank you, Mayor. There were six events that received $2,000. That was the top echelon of the award. One that received $1,000, a couple that received $500, and then four that received $250 awards. Oh, thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. If you go to slide four, and we'll noodle on that for a minute. Thank you, sir. So here are all the award applicants. Pretty good cross-section of the different types of events. I was, I didn't read through all the feedback from Prab, but I know there was quite a bit of deliberation. Those folks spent a lot of time thinking about this and kind of arguing back and forth. I know Dawn is here. I don't know if you have any additional comments. Again, put people on the spot, but if you'd like, yeah. Again, sorry to put you on the spot. Just a little color commentary if you like.
Yeah, basically, what we did was we ranked each one individually per each member did. And then when we had our meeting tonight to determine it, we basically put it together into a spreadsheet, figured out who the top was to the bottom, put them up on the board, and started debating the pros and cons of each one. And I think we did a pretty fair job of hitting the events that we felt were going to be the events that will draw people to Woodland Park and to bring in business to our local community, to the businesses, in that it also would provide a benefit to the community, either entertainment, educational, physical, you know. So we felt we did a pretty good job of evenly distributing the money. There were some that we felt had maybe potential for becoming a signature event, like the baton twirling competition. They actually presented a very good, detailed packet with theirs, showing us that, you know, when they did it previously over the last couple of years, I think this is like their third year they're doing it, that they showed us, you know, how many people came in, how many nights they stayed here, that type of stuff. So we thought that maybe that would be one that, with a little bit of money, would maybe help to grow into something that would be something that would turn into a signature event, drawing people from outside the area, and also maybe provide some inspiration to local people to become baton twirlers. So that was kind of our mindset as we did that. So it was a long process, and it was very interesting in learning some of the needs out there of some of our organizations, you know. So any questions from council?
Ma'am? Dawn, did the applicants have to be registered 501Cs or nonprofits?
I'm trying to remember. I believe they did, but don't hold me to that one. That was a month or two ago.
There was no, I don't believe there was any criteria in the packet. Now, there may all have been, and I would imagine that would be helpful, but I don't recall that being a hard requirement.
It seems like I saw certificates from some, but not all. One thing we found was that the packets sometimes weren't as complete as maybe they could be. You know, a little bit more information, a little bit more detail on, you know. Some of the groups presented information that was a couple of years old. So it's hard to judge on how, you know, okay, you show an increase from two years ago when you're giving us this data when you did it last year. So.
My other question was, did you take into consideration whether or not the organization would be receiving other in-kind donations or services? For instance, the Veterans Rally, they will be receiving assistance from our police department, if I'm not mistaken. So did you take that into consideration?
Yes, and that one was kind of a hard one because they actually presented three different applications for the grant. They presented one for the rally, one for the ride, and one for the traveling wall. So, you know, some of the board were saying, well, it's all the same thing. And then there were some of us that looked at it and said, now, it's not really all the same thing. You know, I, I, like I looked at it, you know, the rally and the bike ride, yeah, they get a lot of in kind services. The Veterans Wall to me was the one that I felt actually deserved a larger chunk, if you were going to do that, because of the fact that that one doesn't really get revenue drawn in. It's revenue going out, basically bring it in. But it does provide a, could, brings in people from out of town to see it, especially considering this was the only appearance in Colorado this year of the traveling wall. And also the effect that it has on a community to the veterans. And, you know, I'm not a vet, but that does have an impact on, so. You know.
And I, I wouldn't dare dismiss the baton twirling competition because I was a sixteen year old major at once. Go, girls.
Well, you know, and I kind of look at it, you know, it's kind of maybe a dying art, you know?
It is, definitely, especially with fire.
Yeah, but if we can draw, you know, some interest in it and get some local people involved in it because it's here and they can go see it, you know, I kind of felt that was a, a definite one that might deserve a little seed money to help.
So Dawn, as a representative for Prab, this is like a maiden voyage for this.
Yes, it was.
Yeah. So what are you, what metrics are you looking for from these events? If we were to consider doing anything like this again, because you said, some of what I heard Michael say was it needed to bring outsiders, it needed to bring revenues. So is it, do we have a way of even tell determining that?
One of the things is that we're going to require an after event report from them. So we should get some feedback from them.
Like how many attendees, how many?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because we want to see, you know, did this help any? Plus, it'll help us revise hopefully the application process. You know, I don't know if Prab is going to be the people next year looking at this, but we can definitely, after we start getting some feedback, help the city with feedback from our end on what we went through. Whoever takes, takes over this project, we kind of caught it on the tail end of Grace leading. So, you know, we, we'll definitely want to provide some feedback on it. And I think the board, you know, if it chooses, the city chooses to keep that with Prab for next year. I definitely think we're, we're up to the challenge on it. In a way, it was kind of enjoyable and we actually had a fun time that night doing it. I mean, we, we had a good discussion back and forth. And at the end, we all left in consensus and nobody had any hurt feelings over any of this. And none of these projects had any special ties to anybody in the group, so.
Well, Mayor, I might.
Can, can, just to make one of the color.
Go ahead.
I, I was not for this funding at all, but given the fact we didn't get an economic development officer, Main Street is still not up and relaunched, this seems to me to be the only window that we have right now attempting to do that function. So I guess my question to Michael and, or probably now Aaron and our, and our council is, if we're allocating these sort of funds for business development, attracting business, do we want to look at an umbrella with where we were trying to go with an economic develop officer and Main Street? And do you see Prab having any interaction in that?
Well, and I, my apologies, Dawn, and I'm going to address that a little bit later. And you're exactly right, Prab kind of took that unenviable position of filling in and evaluating that, which they did a beautiful job on. And thank you, Prab, all of Prab members for doing that. It was a huge service to the community. I know it took a lot of time.
I'll make sure that it gets back to them.
Absolutely. A lot, I know a lot of thought went into it. Grace shared a little bit with me how that conversation went. And there, there were big charts, iterations, and it was, it was beautiful, bureaucrat dream. But the idea was that this would live under economic development and there would be very close alignment between the city's broader economic development goals and how this money is spent, especially bringing in those, those heads and beds dollars from outside of the county, outside of the region as much as possible. So, yeah, you're absolutely on point with it because we did have that setback with economic development. We, we, Prab stepped in and took that role, but I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about it here in a few minutes.
Mayor, if I might for a moment, it has come to my attention that there's been some concern in the community about possible conflict with regards to my role on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as the council liaison. And I just want everyone to know that before the meeting, I had contacted the Park and Rec Director and told her that I would not be attending that meeting and that I would recuse myself completely from this consideration at, and this deliberation and the process that the Prab board did to arrive at this. And I'm sure Dawn will confirm that for you. I was not there. I was not there in any way, shape or form to vote, which I don't vote anyway on that board, or influence them at all by my presence. So that was done in advance and was my, I took that initiative to do that because I just didn't think that I, it was appropriate for me to be there. And the other thing that I'd like the council to consider going forward maybe would be, it was interesting, I was surprised to see this go out and that the, the payments had been issued without the council having the opportunity to see this before the, the payments were made. So I'd like the council just to put that in their thoughts to see if that's something that maybe we'd like to do. Not necessarily to say yea or nay, but just to see it before it goes out. And maybe share thoughts. I don't know.
I was gonna say, the Prab board was kind of under the thought that it was going to go to council before anything was finally, you know, final approval, so.
And that had a lot to do with my reason for not being there, was because I anticipated that. I'm not saying yea or nay or chastising or saying anything about what happened. I'm just thinking going forward, it might be something to consider.
No, and I echo that thought completely. I think.
Thank you, Dawn.
I think the Prab board does too.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So that it should be presented in a well, or should it be that, that Prab does the recommendations and then council finalized?
That, that would be my thought on it.
Because, yeah, because I don't think it would be fair for you guys to go through everything and then approve stuff and then bring it to us.
And then we'd say, well, no, we don't agree. So, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. It did happen with the previous community investment fund. The recommendations were bought, brought to council and there were occasions that the council did not approve every recommendation. I, I would think that this would be similar. I only thought that perhaps it was coming out of the city manager's budget and that's why we didn't see it, that that was out of your largesse.
Yeah, it is, it is in the council budget. That's, that's on me that it didn't come back to council. I, maybe I forgot that, I didn't recall it being super clear if it was, so that it would come back to council because we did have the city board over it. Figured that that might be sufficient, but absolutely. As I said, this, this was a pilot process this first year. And we're learning a lot. There's a number of recommendations you're going to see here in just a minute that I, I suggest you all consider. That should, I mean, that's a pretty big one. That's an obvious one. That's an easy one.
Yeah, and I, I, like I said, I'm not trying to belittle or put down the process by any means. I think you guys did a fabulous job. I just wanted to make it clear that I wasn't involved and, and just put that feather in, in you all's, not feather, but put that thought in your head for, for maybe next year.
Well, Michael or, or Aaron, whoever, I, I don't have a problem. It's, it's only, I say only, it's only fifteen thousand dollar budget approval. And I thought it had to be over twenty five thousand for us to weigh in, or is it fifty now?
Fifty for contracts.
It's fifty for contracts. So, so from my perspective on this, we've already delegated that to your office to handle it. So I don't think, except as a courtesy, I don't think it has to come back. And that certainly doesn't have to come back, in my opinion, for a vote. All right.
I don't know. If it comes out of the council budget, I think the council should, I mean, we should bless it off, yeah. Ninety nine point nine percent of the time, it's going to be no big deal, but there may be the one. And maybe it's always a hundred percent, but I don't think it's that much. They can do a quick presentation and be done.
I like the holy water thing, you know?
Can, can we, can we let Dawn go back to her seat? Thank you, Dawn. Sorry, Dawn, to put you on the spot. Well done, sir. We didn't even practice that at all. You did a great job. Thank you. And so, Dave, we can go to the next slide. Thank you, sir. Trying to keep the short, great questions, great suggestions. I, I really appreciate that, council. So in, in hearing feedback from some of you and from some other folks in the community, we did have a handful of recommendations. I've heard two today that are not up there, but I'll go over it verbally. As, as was mentioned, there were some events that some people might consider a single event that applied under multiple events with multiple applications. Clever, however, in the interest of fairness, we, we would suggest that maybe we limit the number of applicants to one instead of allowing events to be bifurcated or otherwise per application cycle. Prab adopted the practice out of pragmatism, certainly, to a maximum award of two thousand per applicant. In the application, we said that the maximum award could be five thousand dollars. Prab, we gave them full latitude to do what it wanted, and it went with the two thousand ceiling, and that's just fine. Would the council want to limit that app, that maximum award so that there could be more awards as opposed to fewer, larger awards? Now, some other feedback I've had since putting this deck, slide deck together was, you know, some of the awards, as Mayor Proton Case mentioned, were very small. And the argument could easily be made that that kind of defrays the benefit of really wanting to bolster a handful of events, of signature events truly, which by definition, there should not be too many of those. And so would you also, if you're going to consider a ceiling of two thousand dollars, would you want to have a floor of a thousand dollars? Or do you want to make the floor two thousand dollars so that you'd have fewer awards but have more impact, more bang for the buck, literally, to some extent? So something to think about. Hopefully that makes sense. We, we recommend that Prab continue doing the amazing job they did last time, until it's council members who log his point, that we have a perhaps more economic development minded organization or a board really formed as part of the Economic Development Office proposal that we floated to you all many months ago. A, a business roundtable sort of board was conceived as a advisory board to the Economic Development Director. As we put that Economic Development Office on hold with questions about the hiring the director and then about the future of lodging tax, that committee, that board has not been formed yet. Perhaps it will be soon. Perhaps it might be a little bit longer, depending on what happens with lodging tax revenue. If that board is not going to place soon, we'd recommend that Prab reprise their role of being that evaluation committee. Three A would be that council approve. Y'all, I will ask you if you would like to have council have final approval on Prab's recommendation. And then as, as Mayor Proton Case mentioned, she's a liaison to Prab from council. She voluntarily recused, but to codify that practice into this process so that if there are any future council liaisons on Prab, do not vote, especially if council gets that final approval in the future. Revisit, as, as Dawn kindly mentioned, there, there is a codified process that there is a post event follow up. There is a report that will need to be written by each of the recipients. And so make sure that that does get done. I will not be here, obviously. I have every confidence in Aaron that he will follow up with this, but do, do know that that post report is coming. And I, I would encourage a conversation of this board to, to review how well it worked at that time when we have some metrics. And then do you want, yeah, do you want to have, like I said earlier, do you want to have a, a floor for the minimum award? So Dave, if you could go to that, thank you, sir. Mayor, I don't know if you would like me to go through these one, one by one. I can. If there's any other suggestions council would like to, to put out there, I'd ask for a consensus on other revisions you'd like made.
Sure.
Does that, does that work?
Yeah.
All right. So are y'all okay with limiting it to one applicant per cycle? Okay.
Maybe. Maybe. I could probably be talked into it.
I would probably support, I would probably support the one handed per cycle. I mean, it's, I, I understand the three with veterans things and they are, there are slight differences which could justify the three different awards. I, I could probably go either way. I guess I could go either way. But my preference, I think, is one.
I, I would add to that, that I think that the idea of having a ceiling and a floor is a good idea because then we can have some significant kind of measurements of what there are. So whether it stays at two thousand and as you suggest, one thousand, that's, that could be discussed, but.
You know, I, I don't hate to limit ourselves because you just never know what might come in the door. And if our hands are tied and there's something that would justify something more, I, the floor, I think, I think that our guidance and just the mere definition of signature really lends itself to something more significant. I, I think what we saw, and please don't take this as, as a dig, but this is not meant to be rude. I think what we saw resembled the Community Investment Fund instead of a signature event like we had defined it. And so I, I don't care to put a ceiling because I think that we're reasonable people and, and that we can limit that, but a floor, I mean, how do we define those? Because we don't know what's going to come in the door. There may be something that, that a five thousand dollar award would seem reasonable. Whereas two thousand dollars, I mean, how do you, how do you determine what that limit is? Because you don't know what's coming. And I think as reasonable people and we have good guidelines, those will fall out naturally, I would think. But I don't, my desire and I kind, I'll take responsibility for starting this conversation back last budget season. And my thoughts were more of the larger signature events that really bring a huge economic impact to our community. And I think it's important that they are, they do not charge for admission is one thing that I think is important. Or maybe it's just a nominal fee to participate. And I know, that's just my thought process. I hate to tie our hands because we don't know what's coming. And I think we have wise people that will be making those recommendations. And if it comes back to us, then we have that final opportunity for a different set of eyes to take a look at it and be sure that it's meeting the expectations of the council.
I, I would agree with that sentiment as well. When I listened to Mr. DeSalem's recap of the deliberation process, it began to sound like the Community Investment Fund, which had a, a set of bylaws actually, and talked about applicants had to be nonprofit, registered nonprofits in good standing. I don't believe, I wasn't here during the last budget process, but I thought the intent was to offset costs for signature events. But I also think that having a set of bylaws for whichever organization But I also think that having a set of bylaws for whichever organization looks at the applications next year is appropriate. That way, everyone knows what the boundaries are and what the criteria for applying is. I don't believe that it is, as Councilman Cases has mentioned, that setting a ceiling or a floor is necessary. It may be that this group next year only decides to fund one signature event. But I would also ask that if we develop bylaws, and I think that's, that's appropriate, that we also take into consideration in-kind donations that these events are already receiving. The, the Veterans Rally is a very good example of that. We know that they will require assistance from the city to set up that event, as, as does the symphony. But I think that needs to be part of the deliberation process.
Yeah, I, I'd add to that if I could. The whole Community Investment Fund, we as a council have gradually weaned the community off of that whole idea. So that goes back to your idea of whether they're 501(c)(3) or not. To my way of thinking, it's not council's responsibility nor a fiduciary, a good fiduciary practice for us to take folks to come, and I don't mean this disrespectfully at all, but to come and say, please give us some money. We have taxpayer dollars and we have responsibility to allocate those fairly. Now, the way that this has been presented under an economic development in terms of measurably bringing dollars into our community, that to me is a leg up in a way that we can, I, I hope, and maybe Aaron can weigh in on how we measure that. But that's why for me, this is, this isn't to be a community investment model at all. And I don't care personally if it's a pro, for-profit group who comes up, who has a great idea, and it brings money in, give them a leg up because it is bringing dollars to the city and therefore it's, it makes good fiduciary sense for us to like take a risk in that regard. So, I mean, I would like to see this. I, I'd like to see this in the budget cycle coming up, go into what we're doing in terms of economic development and what we're doing to, which we tried to do for years, and that's bring some cooperation together between the volunteerism, which mainstream to my mind is that with the business community, working with the chamber, working together to really get a sense of excitement. There's, hey, there's a new something happening in Woodland Park. So I'd like, just like to see this stay focused on economic development.
I would agree with that. Analysis for profit or nonprofit could be limiting an opportunity. So I, I, I get that. So. So, yeah, I was, I'm still not sold on the whole idea collectively, without seeing numbers, to see if it really does bring in. Because you know me, I like numbers.
I know.
Um, so, you know, I'll, I'll do whatever council more or less wants to do this year around, but next year, I mean, for twenty twenty-five, I'm not necessarily there. I do like Councilman Harvey's in-kind because that's the first thing that came to mind when I saw the list was, you know, I know how much in-kind the rally gets. And so I think that needs to, to wait, to be weighed in and.
So does the symphony.
So does the symphony.
Change, so.
So, yes.
Stay tuned.
And probably the Fourth of July. So there's a number of them that get in-kind service as well, and I think that should be accounted for.
That was for the criteria, was if they do receive in-kind services and how much. And some of the larger events that we consider signature events right now, such as the Fourth of July, the bikers or the Veterans Rally, Farmers Market, those kind of things, we really struggled with the fact, are they deserving money? Because part of the idea of this program was to build new signature events. So like at the symphony, we look at, was there any new innovative things going on with it? Yeah. We're using the local license thing for doing drones instead of fireworks. So there was something kind of new there. The Farmers Market is always adding different things to it. So there was some innovation there. We were looking at that, too. Are they doing things to make it not the same all the time? We kind of struggled with, you know, and you know, it's a lot of this because it was more of a fundraiser and nothing changed in it. And it was very expensive. So we were looking at the cost, too, for the community. So we, those kind of things were weighed in when we got our city.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I chime in a couple of thoughts?
Please.
First of all, I, I do like the thoughts of every one of the other council members regarding targeting, this is for economic development, in my opinion, since it is a signature event. However, I also view it as a potential seed event. In other words, a small thing could be entitled to a very small amount that might blossom, you know, some great idea that starts small. I, I like giving the flexibility to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board or, or whichever board it becomes or remains to have flexibility. So there's no cap, there's no floor. My, my only concern is the guidance that they are using, and I'm going to use one of the awardees that I'm looking at, and I hope this is an accurate list, it's in the packet, the Colorado, Colorado State Battalion, Baton Twirling Competition.
Be careful.
I, I'm not sure if that is being conducted in Woodland Park, is it? It's a question, first off.
Rusty, this is Michael, sorry. Don DeZelma is saying, yes, indeed. He's confirming that it was held here. At the high school.
Or is going to be conducted in October.
It, it has been at the high school the past two years and will again.
Okay. That, that was my one concern, since it's a signature event. This is something I would expect the awards to be to applicants that are going to recurring, do the event right here in Woodland Park because it is economic development. Okay, those are my comments. Don, you've answered why that one was there. I'm not against having a couple seed events. I, I would find it very hard to justify as many. What I would view as seed events, you know, two fifty to five hundred dollars is kind of a seed event. I would expect to see maybe one or two of those since we're really targeting signature events. I agree with Robert that maybe some larger awards to truly signature events, because that's what we're really trying to do, is make them big. So those are my thoughts.
And just for some interesting color commentary, counsel, this is not really here or there, but just last month in July, there was the twenty twenty-three World Jump Rope Championships down the hill in Colorado Springs. The, this quick, quick little article says hundreds of athletes from twenty-five different countries are in town this week for an eight-day event showcasing the best jump roping across the globe. It's that new, as new record in twenty twenty-three for a number of athletes competing, and it's held at the ropes and arena there at CC. So jump roping, okay. It's a thing. Baton twirling, hey, absolutely.
Fire, it's a real big thing.
With fire, the fire baton.
Michael, wouldn't it make a difference if it was single jump roping versus duo?
Oh, I don't know if this double dutch, I'm sure it was a division, the double dutch division. But it, it is a funny thing, but, you know.
It's a signature event.
The, the World Jump Rope Competition, and it's tied to Olympic City, USA, our neighbors to the south here. So, you know, there, there is some wisdom in funding something that has room to grow and appreciate. I don't know about Baton twirling, maybe so. But there is wisdom in that. This is proof.
Pardon me?
Can we get the batons people here?
We can.
For council. Demonstrating.
Councilmember Harvey, lead the group.
I still have my batons.
You gonna come in a short dress, too?
Yeah. Kristen, Kristen, we'll see what she can do.
I just want to check in real quick with Councilmember Connors. Did you have any comments for this? Not, not necessarily baton twirling, but.
It is, Mayor, it is extremely interesting to be on Zoom and watching the show, though. But I do, thank you. I do, I do have one comment. I was, I was in favor of this from the start. I think Mayor Protem and I were both on the same page. So I think any improvement we can do to this program and I, I would appreciate that. And I'll go with that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
So I'm trying to regroup here on everything I just heard. This board would like to have a set of bylaws for. No?
Guidelines are fine. It, it sounds, you know, I saw the application. It sounds like there are parameters built into that application.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that an applicant understands that, you know, you may or may not be a signature event in the opinion of the board or whatever group ends up deciding next year. It was just a thought.
Okay.
It's fleeting. It's gone.
No, no, that's okay.
I don't believe it.
This is the sausage making of government. All right. All right. So going, going back to the original list here, does the council wish to establish a maximum or minimum award for?
No.
For awards?
I would not like to have the council establish. I would leave it to the judgment of whatever the appropriate board is based on the applicants that come before me here.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. We will leave it to the all-knowing Prab. Very nice. And does council, are you okay with fifteen thousand dollars? Budget time is coming up. This is something that will be part of that conversation, but.
Can we start there and then have that conversation during our work sessions?
Yeah, agreed.
Do you think about that?
All right. And then council wants to have final approval over Prab recommendations.
Yes.
I'm not, I don't, I think we've already allocated it. It's under fifty grand. It's great to let Prab have that authority. And it's just micromanaging it, in my opinion, if it comes back to us. But I don't mind us saying, hey, this is what we decided. And then we go, hey, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like blessing recommendations. I like.
I like the Prab board having it versus council because it's a group of citizens who are coming together and putting this together for their community and not the council.
Okay.
I agree with you.
That's how I feel.
Yep, I agree.
I still would like the council to have final, just the recommendations because then we can make sure that the, the criteria, I mean, it's just another set of eyes, making sure that our criteria has been. But I will go with whatever the majority of the council would like to do because that's just the kind of girl I am.
So, so do we have a, I appreciate that. Thank you. Do, do we have a consensus just to leave the ultimate decision with Prab then?
Yeah, I, I, I think our input comes at budgets, budget time.
All right.
Okay.
Wonderful.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
All right. And I, I don't know why it's not in here. You okay with codifying that the council, well, I say if council is not going to vote on the final, have the final vote, does council care if the council liaison votes or not while on the Prab board?
Well, the council liaison is not a voting member on the Prab board for anything. It would be a matter of participating in the conversation.
And in your case, Kelly, that was because you're on the symphony?
No, it was because I was on the council and I was under the understanding that that would come back to us.
Oh, okay. Okay.
But I, if I were to, if, if next year came along, I would probably honor the wishes of the Prab board.
Okay.
If they wanted me to participate in the conversation in order to share what my perceptions were of the desires of the council in setting those monies aside. I would be happy to have that conversation, but I would not direct them, nor would I vote.
Because you are not, or anybody who is the liaison from the council is not a voting member, I have no problem with that. I thought maybe the recusal was because you were affiliated with one of the applicants, and then I would think it appropriate to be recused.
I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree.
And I would do that.
Yeah, I agree with Carol. I think it's very appropriate, as a matter of fact, for the liaison to participate in the discussion since you are not a, a voting member, or whoever it is or will be in the future would not be a voting member. They still have the obligation to bring forward dialogue between the two, city council and board.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Rusty, would that be, we'll go ahead.
Assuming there's no conflict of interest, like the symphony being one of the applicants in this particular case.
That is an assumption, yes.
Yes. Then, you know, I, just one more thought is that I would see that my participation in the conversation would not be as to whether or not a organization were funded. It would be more a conversation about the policy, the interpretation of the council's desires in the policy document. That kind of conversation, as far as yay or nay on an award, or whether or not that organization would be deserving, I would not inject my opinions in them. And I don't typically, I just usually share knowledge more than position in the board.
So I guess, on behalf of staff, I'll make the recommendation that you do nothing with this and just leave it be. Very good. All right. Well, I appreciate it, council. Thank you for the feedback. Thank you for putting this together. And I think we're off to a good start. Thank you again to Prab, and it will be even better for next year. And hopefully in first quarter of next year, we'll, we'll have a, a report with all the numbers to you for your consideration.
Very good. All right. We are all the way off to item number ten, new business. And Michael, floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. I, I apologize to the audience for having to listen to me so much this evening. I'm going to get my money's worth. You know, I usually don't say too much here at the dais, as little as possible, actually. But this is my last council meeting. This is my last really effective day as city manager, as you will presumably be giving Aaron the oath of office here in a few minutes, which I'm very excited about. But I, I was told that I should make closing remarks, so.
I get to boss him around, so.
I, I have a, a short forty-eight page statement. But, no, just, just briefly, thank you. A quick note of thanks, first and foremost, to the council for investing your trust in me. I was a brand-new manager, was here for a month and a half, all the month and a half before you all saw fit to allow me to be your interim city manager. And then about six months later, gave me the big chair on an ongoing basis. Thank you for that trust. I take it seriously every day, and hopefully you are pleased with the results that staff and I put together for you. For the staff, thank you so much for your passion and your hard work, your sweat, literally your blood sometimes, and everything you do for our community. If, if this organization has achieved any success whatsoever, it is solely because of your hard work and the passion that you put into your work every day, especially our frontline folks. I think of, I think of Christie at the front desk, who takes all the really fun phone calls about everything from the weather to water bills to potholes, potholes, more potholes. I think of our police officers who have to deal with difficult people on the worst days of their lives. I think about our field crews who have to go out in the blazing, for Woodland Park blazing heat and for anywhere flipping cold to do what they do. Our field crews who have to deal with the nasty brown stuff that I won't elaborate upon any further and, and do that in all kinds of weather. And to our directors, especially who I work with the most, thank you for working with me and helping advance the vision of creating a better organization and a better community. Thank you to the community itself. Many of you are here, and you're here every week, doing this to yourselves for some reason. I don't understand, but I do appreciate it. Don, man, you rock. You're always here. And truly, just the example of what you did here tonight, being, being called up to the podium where most people You're always here. And truly, just the example of what you did here tonight, being, being called up to the podium where most people are gonna break into a cold sweat. It's folks like yourselves, yourself, who puts their community first. And truly, there's many of you here. There's so many, I, I don't want to name too many folks, because I know I will leave folks out. I do want to thank Deb, because we work together so often, and I know she loves this community and loves the businesses here. And we don't always agree, but we always know that we're here for Woodland Park, and that's, that's much appreciated. And for, for folks like Lori and others who spend so much of their time on community committees volunteering, to all of our volunteers, thank you so much for giving your time for our community. That's, that's truly remarkable. It's our nonprofit community as well. Most of all, I'd like to thank my family, who puts up with a lot from me, good days and bad days, my wife, my kiddos, and all their support. And most of all, thanks, thanks to God, my, my Savior Jesus Christ, for helping me get through a day-to-day. Sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's not. So just briefly, some accomplishments. My number one thing here was to build trust for our community. Day one, like, there's, we have some work to do. And again, through our staff, folks who are no longer here, especially folks like Grace, who helped do a lot of community engagement, Kristen, and other departments, think about the short-term rentals engagement process. We put a lot of time and effort into that. The budget, we've made the budget more transparent. We've made it tell a story. It is y'all's primary policy document, and so it needs to tell the story of that policy. What's up with In Park, our digital democracy platform, allowing people to have a very direct voice into the things that we do. You'll see the National Community Survey going out to mailboxes here in a few weeks. I, I hope that we've moved the needle on building that trust with our community, and would encourage Erin, certainly, and staff to continue figuring out how to make it even better. This is just the start on how we can do that. We did, we did pay off the Memorial Park debt. Thank you to the, the discipline of the council and to the staff and the community, of course. We're very proud of that. We, we have a fund, fund reserve of approaching 30%, and the general fund, we're in great financial shape. You know, that has come at some cost, high vacancies, but the, the, the city is in great shape, thanks to Erin, and thanks to the finance department and to all of you. And so we've, we've taken that fiscal conservative charge very seriously. We would say fiscally accountable. That's, that's Erin's term, and I appreciate it. I still look for me, sorry. Just being smart with the money, and that's, that's investing in stuff that needs to be fixed, and spending money the right way instead of just spending it. I think we've done that pretty well. And finally, trying to build relationships with the community, with our fellow governments, with our boards, with our businesses. I think we've done an all right job. There's still more, more work to do. Our, my, my charge to our staff is to love our residents, to show empathy, and to continue to put them first every day. Think about every day what that looks like and what that means. It'll be different every day. And sometimes it's easy, sometimes it really sucks. For our community, please, as Ms. Sample mentioned earlier, let's, let's look for the unity and the harmony together. Division just causes us all to fall. I've gotten to be in the middle of warring factions several times in my tenure here, and our community is too small and has too much to offer to allow division over whatever fault line to continue to drive the dialogue here. I hope that, though we disagree, we can disagree agreeably going forward, and that we can find room for grace and forgiveness for one another going forward. To the council, thank you for letting me tell dad jokes at the dais on occasion. I'm sorry, but not really. What do you call a boomerang that doesn't come back? Because I know you're from Down Under, sort of, kinda. What do you call a boomerang that doesn't come back?
Well, they wrote, they wrote a song about it.
Oh, yeah?
My boomerang won't come back. My boomerang won't come back. And I don't know the rest of it, but.
So, no, I don't know. Will it come back to you? No. A stick. That's what you call a boomerang that doesn't come back. I never said they were good dad jokes, just dad jokes. Huh? That's nice. And so finally, I will, I will put it to rest here, but I wish all the best and nothing but the best to this council, to Erin, to Suzanne, my, my folks who've, who've been there for me, to Kip, to Karen, to Kristen, Ben, Cindy, the chief, all, all of you for being there for me. Wish, wish you great, great success in the future, and thank you to the community finally for your trust.
You will be swirling this one. Thank you.
To Jeff and Nina, to their humongous partners of mine, they help me bring down the barriers. Again, though, we don't always agree. We work all together and we have great assets.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me? Not yet. Do you know me for how long now? 20 years?
I'd just like to invite anyone, staff or council, if you would like to have some comments for Michael, too.
So, Mayor, if, I don't know if council would like to go first, but we do have a couple of staff members that would like to speak. So what, what is your desire?
Let's let staff.
Okay, first is the chief.
All right.
A man of few words.
See, my reputation still gets in the way, anyway. Well, it wouldn't be right if I didn't have a plaque. Because that's what I do, but, all right, I'm coming off of here again.
Still working?
I could go on, you know that.
Yes, we do.
But a couple of things that turn her off. A couple of things that you just mentioned really hit hard with me, and that was the trust. And I can appreciate not only your professional stance on the trust factor and what that means, not only to our team, but what our team brings to you, and then what we all collectively bring to our residents, business owners, and everybody who comes to visit us. And we started that process from quite a distance. And professionally, that was a, that was a hurdle for me. I'd never jumped. So I can say without question that the trust thing I get. And I want to thank you for having that trust in bringing the guy from central Florida, three quarters of the way across the United States, take on was probably one of the biggest tasks you've had faced in your short time as a city manager. That took a lot, and I know that. And I know that the conversations we had indicated that you weren't going to just kind of throw anybody into the, to the mix. You wanted to make sure that you did what you could to kind of get, get the right person to fit. I only hope at some small level that I've done that and reaffirmed your process is pretty well spot-on. And if it's not, lie to me and tell me that it is. Without making any more jokes, you know, I do have a plaque here for you. And, hey, listen, I got the best plaques going. Anybody else? So, yeah, and it wouldn't be right, but in this one, you know, I'll, I'll present to you on behalf of the entire police department, because this is not my plaque. This is our plaque. And a couple of them would have stuck around to watch this, Bud Duty Calls, and some of them had to run. But nonetheless, if you'll just humor me, let me try to read this to you. And I didn't bring my reader, so I'm good. It's a little bit bigger print, so I'm good. So I just want to read this into the record. It says, presented to Michael Lawson, in recognition of your dedication and support to the Woodland Park Police Department during your time as a city manager. During these years, you have supported the department under circumstances that anyone else would have likely avoided. And for your efforts and determination, the department was set on a pathway to future success. Your commitment to our workforce and compassion is unmatched, and, and will be appreciated long after your departure from public service. We wish you well in your future endeavors. With our sincere thanks and appreciation dated today, August 3, 2023. Thank you very much, sir. And I know this is just another chapter. We'll always be in touch, but I appreciate it. And thank you very much from everybody on our team. You have one now. All right, Kristen, if you want to.
He smiled. So, Mayor, I'd like to invite up Erin now.
From one Italian to the next.
And then there's a third one coming.
All right. It is hard to follow the chief, of course, but I would like to remind everyone, there was a gentleman hired from South Florida before the chief. I'd like to think that I kind of paved the way for another Floridian, an Italian, if we can keep that in mind. Working for Michael, I mean, I think all of you know, it's a blessing. It's been a blessing to me since I got here. This man is a leader. He's a friend. He leads with empathy. He leads with authority, and then he also leads with humility. And that's something I think that makes him such a great leader in this community for the staff and for all the citizens, because it's something special. It really is. Michael, we have another plaque for you from the city, so I'm not gonna say any more words, because the plaque says quite a bit, and this is from the city staff. So it says, presented to Michael Lawson, in recognition of your dedication to and support of the entire staff of the City of Woodland Park. While serving as our city manager, over the years, you found ways to push the team to succeed and provide levels of service to the community that are unmatched, and that is the truth. You will be remembered for your commitment to service, passion for excellence, and drive to excel. We thank you for believing in our mission and leading the way. We wish you well, and extend our sincere thanks and appreciation for your service to the city.
And now for the third Italian, the New York Italian. I don't have a plaque for you. No plaque. We do have something for you, though. My words are prepared. I've worked for the city now, this is for council, for about 20 years. Through those 20 years, I've worked for several different city managers. I got it. Each city manager that has come and gone has left a different legacy with the city. Michael Lawson's no exception. From the get-go, Michael arriving at the city, he was a calming presence. Michael came to the City of Woodland Park at a very tumultuous time. We had a very difficult and divisive council at that time. Our staff was wounded and broken. Michael saw that and did what he does best. He led with peace and calmness. As his deputy city manager, I observed this peace and calmness every single day. Michael built a relationship with the council that in all these years I have never, ever seen before. He instituted one-on-one meetings with the council. Michael and I would meet every other week with the council members, and sometimes once a week, where we would discuss city business and what to expect at the upcoming council meetings. By having these one-on-one meetings, we really got to know each council member and build a very strong relationship with each and every one of you. We saw them not just as council members, but ordinary people, and really got to know them on a personal side. I thank Michael for this, and really appreciate the relationships we've built with each and every one of you. It takes a lot of time and dedication to meet with seven individuals every week or every other week, but it is time Michael and I have always looked forward to. Another, another thing that I appreciate, appreciate about Michael is that he has always respected my opinions and has always respected me. I feel that over the past few years, as, that we've complemented one another as a leadership team and have built a stronger staff and city. For that, I am grateful. Michael is a godly man, and I think council all knows this. He lives his life each and every day that way. I have a scripture that I keep on my computer monitor that has always reminded me of Michael. The scripture reads, "Whatever you do, work at it with all your heart, as working for the Lord, not men. It is the Lord Christ you are saving, serving." This is from Colossians 323. "Michael, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you for these past years. Although I am sad to say goodbye, I'm excited about your future opportunities. I have learned so much from you. You have been an integral part of my professional development. Thank you for everything, and Godspeed to you and your, your family, my friend." You don't have a plaque. We have a bag of swag. Bag of swag from the city and some other goodies in there. Thank you. I don't know, Kip or Amy, or anything, anybody? If not council, can chime in?
Council?
Okay, so I guess I'll go first. So I agree with everything that has been said by the three Italians. And the three of me goes, and as I sit here staring at the core values, Michael is those core values. We may not always agree, community or council members, but you are the service, the trust, the respect, the integrity, the vision, and the excellence. Thank you very much for your friendship. Suzanne, I can't do it either. I will, I will miss you.
Okay, I, I'll go next, Michael. I know I was really rude to you and called you a short timer a couple of times the last few weeks, but it was all in fun, because I know you have a wonderful sense, sense of humor, and you've always let me be me. You have been, I've worked for six, I think, city managers, maybe seven. And by far, you have exceeded what I saw in them tenfold. And I think that you, you all have nailed it in the, right on the head. It's, it's his compassion, his empathy, his ability to lead with kindness and care. And you always put the person first, and that's, that's a rare thing in, in the leadership, particularly in, in government. It's not an easy job. The jobs that these folks take on, working in municipal government, are often thankless and long hours and short resources, and, but they love what they do, and they do it for the people of the community. Because you could take the skill set that you all have and work in private sector and make a whole bunch more money, but sometimes you don't get the reward that you get working for citizens, particularly in a small town. So I, I, I'm honored to have worked with you, and I wish you all the best in the whole world, because you deserve it, as does your family. And I know you're going home, because you're just a city boy, but at least you know where you belong, and I think you'll thrive wherever you go. Thank you, Michael, for everything. It's been a pleasure.
Frank or Rusty?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Frank. Michael, I really appreciate your leadership, your knowledge, your gorgeous family, and I wish you luck in the future. I could keep going, but everybody else is saying the same thing, so we're not gonna delay the inevitable. So, thank you, Michael. Appreciate you. God bless you and your family. And the inevitable is getting out the door.
Thank you, Frank.
And Michael, Michael, I'm not gonna say a lot. The only thing that I will add is how much I valued your ability to communicate with everybody. And, and that means the citizens that would come in and talk to you individually, the council members that you spoke with, our attorney, the staff. And having those one-on-ones, where the exchange of information, because as a council member, it's very hard to know what citizens have come in and spoken to city staff. What are their concerns? Evidently, the citizens trusted you so well that they would come in and have open dialogues with you. And you had the wisdom to take notes, and when we would have our one-on-ones, not only would we go through the agenda, so we were prepared for the council meetings. You would bring up and discuss issues that citizens have spoken to you about. I think you have been an invaluable asset to the city in opening and bridging communication. And all I can say is thank you for doing that for Woodland Park, and good luck in your future.
Thank you, Rusty. That means an awful lot.
Um, I, again, I can't reiterate.
before you, because they all had challenging jobs and they all rose to the occasion. But when you said, "Okay, let's schedule our one-on-one meeting," new council member, Harvey, and I said, "Our what? Why would you want to meet with us one-on-one?" Those became so invaluable to me to understand what was coming up on the agenda. And as Rusty has already said, you also had the insight of having met with the citizens in the community. But one of the things that you did say in one of those first meetings was, I was complaining about a citizen, and you reminded me that not everyone has the spirit of a public servant, a true public servant. And I think you epitomize what a good public servant is. Everyone in this room, I would also give that same accolade to, because you don't make money as a public servant unless, maybe if you're in one of the political parties right now in Washington, DC. But there, so often, as a retired military officer, I get the, "Thank you for your service." And I very often don't feel that there's any genuine feeling in that. But in your case, thank you for your service, and good luck.
Robert?
Michael, each and every person here has expressed sentiments about you and accuracies about you that I completely share. The very first thing, though, that struck me about you is that you are a quiet leader, and you're a tough leader. We had some really difficult decisions to be made when you stepped into that seat. And what I was impressed with is you didn't shy from it. You sought counsel from many others, which is very scriptural, and you acted. And it was tough. There was issues of trust, which have been said, that were just so counterproductive and destructive in the city, morale, all sorts of issues in multiple departments, not to mention the temperament of council at the time. So I was on it, still on it. But I just want to thank you for that. Thank you for the hikes. Thank you for the five Ks. I have to let you know that on each and every five K, Michael has beat me. On the last one, though, it was only by a minute, so I was pretty happy. So, in the flatlands and the hills, so very good. And, you know, you have, you've set the bar very high for our city, and I'm excited about that. I'm very excited. I'm excited of who's going to step into your shoes. And the fact that because of the cooperation and the listening, you know, you're very thoughtful, you're like a, your mind is like a parachute to me. In other words, you are open. You would, if you would hear a new thought, oh, it'd go up on your board. Oh, I like that. That's a good thought. And you're, I love your board, by the way. I've taken many pictures of it. Because it helps us also. Transparency was a very big issue that you bridged in this community financially and in terms of just seeing that no, government's not hiding anything from you. Here I am, here's what I'm doing, the best I can. It's not perfect. But you didn't hide behind stuff, and you faced it very humbly and very, I felt very strong. So I'm, I just, I've come to love you and respect you, I really have, and I hope that our relationship continues in the future, even though you're going off to the big smoke, which I rarely get to, except for CML conference. So thank you, all the very best. God bless you and your family, and look forward to your progress.
All right, last but not least, too, I'd just like to say that you have been an integral part of this council, being a functional council. All of us have worked well together. We have come a long way, but I don't think that we would have achieved what we've achieved without you. So that speaks milestones, because for a long time, long before you, before me, council was not as high-functioning as they could have been. And I think that it shows that we've had leadership outside of just us to help guide us and restructure us and help us communicate better. And so whoever receives you in the future is lucky and blessed. Now I'm going to cry.
Wow, that's a first, Mayor.
Yeah. You've been amazing for us, and we really appreciate it, and we're really going to miss you. And we're going to miss your family, and your beautiful children, and your wife, and baby Boone.
Going to say the dog, too.
We have been lucky as a community to also have you as a family, and we appreciate your family very much, too. We wish you the best. All right, and now, we get to do the oath of office for Aaron. And Aaron's going to have all this responsibility suddenly put on his shoulders, so. They're big shoes to step into.
It's time for the changing of the guard.
Aaron, will you join me? Raise your red hands and repeat after me. I, Aaron Vaselotti.
I, Aaron Vaselotti.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Colorado.
And the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of interim city manager.
The duties of interim city manager.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Be afraid, be very afraid.
So I think Aaron is going to take a seat up here.
Because we still have a little bit of business.
Little bit. Not much.
So let's ask Michael how it looks from down there.
Feels safer, right?
Not yet. We will be getting the name tag, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So we have some council reports, and I just have some dates to announce. August 5th, this Saturday, from noon to 8:30 PM at Memorial Park, Habitat for Humanity of Teller County is sponsoring Vino and Notes. Come enjoy Colorado's finest wineries, great food, and local musicians. Please note, it is not a dog-friendly event. Did you guys hear that? Buy your tickets in advance or pay at the door. August 9th, from 10 AM to noon at Meadowwood Sports Complex, come climb and crawl on vehicles big and small. Touch a truck event will be up and running with tractors, fire engines, snow plows, and much more. This is a free event for the whole family to enjoy. And also, August 10th, from 10 AM to noon, Woodland Park Public Library, you can join them for the end-of-summer foam party and enjoy music while playing in a massive amount of bubbles. Free event for the whole family as well. And August 12th, we have 10 to 5 PM, 10 AM to 5 PM. And August 13th, from 10 AM to 4 PM at Memorial Park, you can enjoy the 38th Annual Mountain Artist Festival. Come see local and national art talent, live music, face painting, and some great local eats. Free event for the whole family. And then August 17th through the 20th, from 9 AM to 5 PM at Saddle Club Grounds between Walmart and Safeway, is the Woodland Park Rock, Gem, and Jewelry Show, with over 40 vendors that have mineral specimens from all over the world, gold panning lessons, flint napping demonstrations, and this is also a free event for the whole family. And that is all the events I have for this evening. Councilmember Case?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
I have nothing to report. Grace is gone. The committee met when we met last time, so until I know who I can talk to, my report's on hold.
Very good. Councilmember Nakai?
So I have the 15th Annual Garden and Greenhouse Tour, sponsored by the Woodland Park Harvest Center. This event was started by Lee Willoughby in 2009 to highlight growing at high altitude. There are 12 locations, six in and around Woodland Park on Saturday, August 26th. What?
He's excited.
Oh, six locations outside of Woodland Park for Sunday, August 27th. Both event days are from 9 AM to 2 PM, and the tours are self-guided. Locations and maps will be available online around August 12th, as well as hard copies around town. The website is wpharvestcenter.org. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Harvey?
Did you want to go back and get Councilmember Neil or Connor before me?
I can do that. Councilmember Connors?
Thank you, Mayor. For the veterans of the PAC Act, you have two crucial dates rapidly approaching. Veterans who file a claim or submit an intent to file by August 9th may have their benefits backdated to August 10th, 2022. Claims can still be filed after August 9th, but you are not guaranteed any backdate of pay. Additionally, veterans discharged between 9/11/2001 and October 1st, 2013, who haven't enrolled in healthcare, have a special window to enroll until September 30th of this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil?
The only report I have for the DDA is that the Tuesday meeting was canceled this month, and the next one we have scheduled will be the first Tuesday in September at 7:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Harvey?
And since I am not assigned to any committees, I don't have any committee reports, but I do know that the city attorney has tendered the draft intergovernmental agreement to the school district regarding the city's collection and distribution of sales tax revenue. The draft IGA has been returned to the city attorney with no action. And so I would like to make the recommendation that we bring both the city council and appropriate representatives from the school district and the charter school to discuss the IGA draft and the future of the tax. And I'd like now to turn this over to city attorney to see if he's got anything to add to that.
Not really, councilmember. I mean, it's your decision where you go from here and how you proceed. I believe earlier you were talking about a work session as the content.
Yes, I would recommend a work session and not an executive session. I would prefer that it be an open meeting to the public to make this as transparent as possible to taxpayers, because that's who we represent. And I leave that up to council's discretion if they would like to promote that or approve that, and then allow it to be scheduled in the near future.
Okay, I think a workshop is a good idea, since there was no response. I think having the opportunity to meet in public and have the conversation about it would be a good thing for everyone involved. So, and I would recommend either the following council or in September to give the board an opportunity to let us know a date that they can all attend.
I agree, I agree. But again, I think it's critical that it become a public discussion and invite those that are truly vested in the issue to participate.
And I think, just to clarify briefly, at least in my mind, too, is I know some people are talking about it, but I think what people don't understand, too, is when this agreement had been done, there were no charter schools. And so now we have a charter school, and I've heard that there's a potential for a second charter school, which I personally think is wonderful. But we have to make sure that everything is being accounted for. And we used to have board members come in and give us an update, and it was discussed. And I know for a long time, it's been the intent of council to at least go through this and make sure we're doing everything right, dot our i's, cross our t's, and that's all I think we're looking for.
Yeah, if we have anything to add, thank Michael Lawson for, that is dialogue and cooperate to graduate, as hokey as it sounds, but it's no insignificant amount of money that is collected through sales tax, 1.09% specifically for the school district. And the IGA was just an opportunity to include the charter school as a recipient of those tax dollars, but also to make sure we had accountability on how the tax dollars were spent. This is not an intent to decrease or eliminate the tax. This is simply a means of having accountability and transparency across the board.
Very good.
Agreed.
So Mayor, I would ask, the three, we have three dates. We could have it August 17th, September 7th, September 21st. I'd like a consensus, so this way we can extend an invitation to the appropriate people.
Well, I think we should, if council doesn't mind, let's ask the board and also the members of mayor's board, what if out of those dates, any would work so that we could all get together before we pick a date?
I agree.
I think that, Jeff, you'll probably extend that invitation. I know you've been the one that's been talking with them. Would that be okay?
Okay. At a minimum, though, I would recommend that it be a work session preceding a regular council meeting.
Very good. I just want to make sure, Councilmember Neil and Councilmember Connors, are you guys on board for that?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
I do support a work session. I'm looking at my calendar, the dates. We'll see what they come back with, and hopefully I'll be available.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Then we're off to our city attorney for reports.
Well, I don't have much of a report, but I didn't, I wasn't part of the Michael Lawson bandwagon a moment ago. I won't take along. Everybody said some really beautiful and correct things. And I, between working at the league and doing this work, I've known hundreds of city managers, and Michael is among the best. And, you know, city managers, you can get a lot of narcissists and egomaniacs and people with all sorts of behavior issues driven by insecurities. Well, I'm an expert in psychology, and...
I think Aaron is self-reflecting right now.
And we, as the attorneys, have to work with these people. And in Michael's cases, like peas and carrots, I mean, it was no problem. It took no effort. It was so natural and real, and everybody was mission-driven. It wasn't about us, it was about what we were doing, and it was a joy to work in that kind of an environment. So thank you. And now all I got to do is get hired as special counsel by Parker.
And we do have city managers' report. Aaron, do you have anything you'd like to share with us? Or Michael?
I don't have anything prepared tonight, so...
Aaron, do we need to give you a couple of weeks to think about dad jokes, or have you got some off the cuff?
I can assure you, that's not my strong suit, so. I can bring some algebraic equations, we can do some accounting lessons, I mean, but dad jokes is not going to be...
Sounds fun.
You have to remember, you have to remember that Aaron's forte is bean counting, and so it's a special treat.
But can you roast the beans like Michael did?
We look forward to working with you, Aaron. Thank you for stepping up to the plate. It's much appreciated. All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.